Good morning, everyone. This is the day after the Cubs win. It's now Thursday, November 3rd, 2016. It's just short of 8:30. We're in a community center at Sierra Room at 8:51 East Williams Street. Do we have a roll call? Kathy, please. Thank you.
Supervisor Aboud, Supervisor Bonkowski, Supervisor Bagwell, Supervisor Shirk, Mayor Cole.
I'm here. Supervisor Shirk is excused for everybody. Supervisor Shirk is anticipating to be a granddad father for the third time, so he's with his daughter at the hospital this morning. She delivers during the meeting. He's going to text Nick and then we're going to announce it here. How's that? All right. All right. But he's excused. Okay. Let's see. Susan Dorpansky, would you lead us in a pledge, please?
We've got to do the invocation.
Oh, I've got to do the invocation first. Let's stand for the invocation, too.
... this morning by morning, mercies we see that come from your hands. So grateful for the rich and abundant life you provide for this great country and going through a difficult time right now with this election, Lord, but pull us through it and help our country to come together. We pray for our leaders here in our community, for our mayor and supervisors, and grant them wisdom and all that they need to make good decisions on behalf of all of us who live here in Carson City on this day. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thanks, Kathy, for getting started.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We're not going to move to item number five, public comment. Anybody on public comment? Good morning.
Mayor, Supervisors, thank you for this time to address you. I have a question. I don't know if you will answer it or not. Is it practice for Carson City to inject itself into private lawsuits?
Just want to remind you, this is public comment. This is the time for public to make comments and not necessarily a back-and-forth dialogue.
Okay. I'll proceed. The FBI has issued a letter from their Public Integrity Unit regarding the database for recording domestic violence in the state of Nevada, and they have concluded that the database is corrupted. The Legislative Council Bureau has published their report, and they have also stated Julie Butler, who states that she acknowledges that the central repository is corrupted. And Thorndahl has the police reports regarding the corruption of the database. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. All right. All right. Any other public comment before? Wait a second before. Go ahead. Come on. Ronnie, come on.
Good morning, Supervisors. I'd like to acknowledge seven of our -- of this year's leadership class are here this morning, so be on your best behavior. We told them this is a well-run meeting, so they are right behind me, and as you saw, they were up there. And also, I would like, Bob, you and I have tried on two separate occasions to honor a very special woman who has made a great impact in our community. However, sort of like the game last night, we were rained out. So I would like for you to take it from here.
I will do that, and I'll ask the board to join me down on the floor here, please. I'd like to, since you already see you're coming up here, Lisa. Okay. Come on back here with the rest of us here. For everyone, this is a special proclamation honoring Lisa Lee, who's standing to my right here today. You'll notice that the proclamation I'm going to read is signed by me, but it's on behalf of all of us. And so I'd like to read this. And we were supposed to give this to you as a surprise at one of the other meetings, and it just kept getting rained out. So the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas Lisa began her career with Advocates to End Domestic Violence in 1986 while still a student at UNR, and whereas she became the executive director of the Advocates in 1988 when it was struggling financially and grew the organization into one of the largest and most respected nonprofits in Carson City; and whereas Lisa grew the Advocate Shelter Program from 14 beds to 51 beds of today serving northern Nevada's battered women; and whereas she then started the successful Taste of Downtown in 1995, an event that today draws thousands to Carson City's downtown core area and raises needed funds for the Advocate Shelter Program; and whereas Lisa opened Classy Seconds, the Classy Seconds thrift store in 1998 to serve underprivileged clients and to further generate income for the shelter; and whereas Lisa is a tireless champion of women, you are tireless; and whereas Lisa is a master grant writer; and whereas Lisa is a highly respected member of Carson City's nonprofit community providing needed services not provided by government agencies, governmental agencies. Now therefore, I, Robert Crowell, Mayor of Carson City, do hereby proudly proclaim October 28th, 2016, because we were supposed to give it to you then, a day in your honor on behalf of Carson City, and that's behalf of all of us here, to thank you for all you've done to enhance the quality of life of so many, and particularly women, in our community. Thank you, Lisa. Okay. You have this, and we have a few words, please. Then we want a picture, too.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. You know, I've done 30 years, and when I started, I really intended to just be a volunteer and do my best and move on, and I got captivated, and it became my passion. So working with victims, both men and females, of domestic violence has really made an implant in my life, and I hope I've done it in others, too. So thank you all very much.
Can your mom have something for you, too?
Oh, goodie.
I'm very proud to be her mother, and I'm very proud to be able to present this to you on behalf of all the community people and each and every one of us that meet you, love you.
Thank you.
And then could I have the leadership class back up, please? Could I have the leadership class back up in front up here? I'd like to read another proclamation this morning. This is a special thank you to the Chamber of Commerce. This proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the Carson City Chamber of Commerce has served the business community since 1945, and whereas the Carson City Chamber of Commerce continually -- by the way, that was the year I was born, and I'm still alive and well. Carson City, the Carson City Chamber of Commerce continually promotes a healthy economy and an unparalleled quality of life in and around Carson City; and whereas the Carson City Chamber of Commerce has been instrumental in creating community-based programs such as Leadership Carson City that are designed to promote a community with a strong sense of place; and whereas the Carson City Chamber of Commerce always encourages residents and visitors alike to shop local for the benefit of all businesses in our community, including those located in the downtown core area; and whereas the Carson City Chamber of Commerce is a premier business networking entity promoting local businesses; and whereas the Carson City Chamber of Commerce was first organized to adopt and promote -- the Carson City Chamber of Commerce was the first organization to adopt and promote the Carson Proud slogan, which has given life to a renewed sense of pride in our community; and whereas the Carson City Chamber of Commerce has played and continues to play an integral role in the revitalization of our historic downtown by taking a leadership role in the development of the Bob and Fadden Plaza and the design of the downtown streetscape, including the solicitation of donated benches. Now therefore, I, Robert Crowell, and this is again signed by me, but it's from all of us, on behalf of our community, do hereby recognize and thank the Carson City Chamber of Commerce for all it has done to promote the community of Carson City and its historic downtown area. Signed this first date, this was signed November 1st, 2016. So Ronnie, can I have you have this, please?
Sure.
Thank you all.
Okay. I've never been shy.
Well, I have to tell you all, thank you very much on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce for this proclamation. It is very surprising, and I'm glad some of you leadership classmates are here today. And also, it has been really a great journey this year in particular to see the way the downtown is coming together. And I will assure you that within the next year, when we have the beautiful flowers hanging and we have the benches out and the whole bit, it will be even a city of which we can be even more proud. Thank you very much, Bob.
All right. Now we've got some pictures. All right. Come on.
Picture change. You ready?
Yeah.
Sorry. Please.
Okay.
And a bright green person.
Got to stop thinking now.
All right.
Thank you, Bob.
A little surprise for you, see? It's been surprising to everybody, so we just --
Okay.
Anybody else have any public comment? It's a nice way to start the day. We usually have these under special presentations, but these were surprise proclamations designed to be surprises, so. Okay, let's take up item six, the approval of the minutes of October 6th. Everybody had a chance to look at those? Motion's in order.
I move to approve the minutes of October 6th, 2016, as presented.
Motion and second on a motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay, carry unanimous. Thank you. All right. On the agenda, Mr. City Manager?
One change.
Go.
Mayor, number eight actually does not need to come to the Board of Supervisors. It needs to go to the Board of Equalization. That is, if the nonprofit that's asking for the personal tax exemption for real property wants to go to the Board of Equalization to get the tax exempted, then they need to go to that body, not you.
Yeah, I understand. There was a little bit of a question as to where this type of thing goes at the beginning, so it's now going -- this matter will be heard in front of the Board of Equalization, I'm told, in February of 2017.
That's correct. That's if the nonprofit decides to go forward through the Board of Equalization.
All right. Thank you. All right. Any other changes to the agenda?
No others.
Board? Unless there's an objection, then we'll take the agenda as published. Item nine, condition of each fund. Anybody want to hear from Nancy? Any public comment on Nancy's? Motion's in order.
I move to accept the report on the condition of each fund in the Treasury and the statements of receipts and expenditures through October 24, 2016, per NRS 251.030 and NRS 354.290.
Motion and second on a motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Well done, Nancy. Thank you.
Speed this easy all the time.
All right. Let's take up item 10. Public Works? Who's doing this? Okay, go. Stephanie, go for it.
Good morning. Stephanie Hicks, Real Property Manager, for the record. This morning, we have before you an item to accept the dedication of two waterline easements from the Belalago Apartments. Let me just bring this up for you. The waterline easements are located at the Belalago Apartments, which is east of Airport Road and south of Highway 50. In April of 2016, the Planning Commission approved a special use permit, which allowed the addition of 64 multifamily units to the existing 175-unit complex. The waterline improvements were required to serve the new units, and the easements are being given to the city for the operation and maintenance of the backflow preventers and the water lines that are public over and across the real property. With that, I'm available for any questions.
Questions to Stephanie? Anybody? Pretty routine. Okay. Any public comment? Seeing none. Motion's in order.
I move to accept the dedication of two waterline easements from Belalago Apartments as described in the Waterline Easement D Exhibit A-1 and A-2, also known as portions of APN 008-312-04.
There's a motion and second on a motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Carry unanimous. Okay. All right. Let's take up the dedication of item 10 Bravo, 10B, dedication to Right Away from APN 007-101-21, Longview Way located between Cogorno and Manhattan Drive. Stephanie, it's yours.
Yes, thank you, Stephanie Hicks, for the record. The item before you is to accept the dedication of Right Away from this parcel. The history of it, just to give you a little background, is that the parcel itself was created back in the '70s, and it appears to be what would have been access to the larger MP parcel to the south. As the parcelling around it proceeded, there were several parcel maps, including one that eventually divided up that large parcel to the south, and somewhere along the lines, that parcel just was never dedicated to the city. There is roadway constructed already within it, and it's a portion of Longview Way. We do have water and sewer lines also in that area, and we have been maintaining it for many years, and so we're here today to ask for acceptance of that dedication.
No cost?
No cost to the city.
Supervisor Bonkowski.
So the city's been maintaining it. Who retained ownership, then?
Ownership at this point was retained by Mr. MP, and he actually contacted us in May, realizing that it is a portion of, you know, the roadway that everybody utilizes. He indicated there was no value for him to keep it and offered it at no cost to the city.
And there's no liability for previous taxes since it was privately, or has he been paying the real property taxes?
He has been paying the taxes.
Okay. And so there's no future liability for him to come back to us and ask us to reimburse him for those taxes?
Not that I'm aware of.
It's a good point, but I would, yeah, I would assume that if they were, that that would be part of this transaction, but.
And just some added information, when he did approach us and ask if we were interested in receiving the property, we did send out a waiver to him for just compensation for the property that he signed in return to us as well.
And it had zero on it?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All right. It's good questions. Okay. Any other questions, the board? Public comment? All right. Motion's in order.
I move to accept the dedication of Right Away from Assessor's Parcel Number 007-101-21, also known as a portion of Longview Way located between Cogorno Way and Manhattan Drive.
Motion and second on a motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose nay, carry unanimous. Okay. Thank you very much, Stephanie. Okay. Let's take up item 10 Charlie. This is potentially to approve a change order to contract 1314-132 Bravo, the Water Resource Recovery Facility 1A, CMAR Construction Services, Dekechi Walters, and Q&amp;D Construction, which is a joint venture for an amount not to exceed $445,050 to be funded from the Sewer Capital Fund Construction Fund. Mr. Bruquette, you want to tell us what's going on here and if this is budgeted and why you're doing it?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Supervisors, David Bruquette, for the record.
If you run anymore, you're going to wilt, you're going to --
Thank you.
You're going to whimper, blow away, man, so.
Thank you.
That's all right. You're healthy. That's okay.
This is actually, this is, you know, has been part of an approved process. It was one of the bid alternates that we discussed in the very beginning. We're moving along on the project very well, and so we're at an opportunity to where we have that approved contingency fund we want to spend that money out of to make this happen. You know, there are some risks if we don't do it, and we know that we needed to do it, so we felt comfortable moving forward and making this recommendation now to go ahead and complete this part of the project.
Anybody else? Board questions? Go. Supervisor Bagwell.
Good morning. Just in general, I was trying to follow along, so is Lakeside, who's giving us the quote, is like, that's just the equipment vendor that sends the product and then? So when I look at the liability within that agreement for the shipping and the insurance, does that rest, then, with the contractor or the city? Who's actually insuring that?
Hi. I'm Dave Backman, Director of the CMAR. Yeah, no, that's just a standard proposal, and we take all that risk, and our contract with the city hasn't changed, so, I mean, we're always on the hook till the end, so nothing's different here.
Good answer.
Yeah. Yeah, and when we negotiate our final purchase agreement, I change a lot of that stuff. That's just their first shot across the bow, but we'll tune it up.
All right. Other questions?
David, the way I understand this, this is pretty much an anticipated expense. You knew this was coming forward. There was a placeholder for it in contingency, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
I would say, and in fact, the discussion at the meeting previously was that we wanted to include it in the first phase, but we didn't have, didn't know that we had the money to do it, so it was the first item up as soon as we could pay for it.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Other comments or questions from the board? Public comment? Anybody? Motion's in order. Who wants to do it?
I move to approve change order to contract number 1314-132B in the amount of $445,050 to replace and install three new Archimedes screw pumps at the existing Headworks facility.
Motion and second on a motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose nay, carry unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you. Stay on the hook.
Yeah.
All right. All right. Till the end. Okay. Let's take up Community Development Planning, item number 11. This is potential amendment to Title 10, amendment to 10.30 Motorcycle Section 10.30.120, and adding a new chapter, 10.31 Off-Road Vehicles. Okay? Mr. Plumm, are you going to do this?
Good morning, Lee Plummel. And as you mentioned, this is an amendment to Title 10, specifically a chapter on motorcycles and adding a new chap, Chapter 10.31 for off-road vehicles. Title 10 is under the enforcement authority of the sheriff. The sheriff's not able to be here today, but he's authorized us to go forward with this. He's in support of this ordinance. This came about in conjunction and with community development helping bring this forward through code enforcement issues that have come up fairly recently with the use of ATVs around home. So a brief summary in a nutshell of this ordinance is that the current ordinance prohibits motorcycles, and this specifically, we're trying to address off-highway motorcycles, dirt bikes, riding within 500 feet of residential neighborhoods. So the current ordinance defines motorcycles in two- and three-wheel vehicles, so by the letter of the law, you can ride your ATVs near houses all day long and around houses. So we're unable to do enforcement on ATVs. The ordinance was adopted in 1978, it appears, looking at the history of the ordinances, so I think it's time to update it. We're trying to update it to include the four-wheel vehicles and various types of four-wheel, of off-highway four-wheel vehicles that there are, keeping the, and then essentially keeping the provisions the same, that they can't be ridden within 500 feet of a residential area. So that's the intent. Again, it's an old ordinance, so at the same time, there's a lot of changes throughout, but the District Attorney's Office took the opportunity to clean it up and make it a little easier to read, clarify it, and more enforceable without really changing the provisions, just adding ATVs in there. So that's a summary of it. We'll take, again, the sheriff's in support of it. We worked with him through this to develop this verbiage in the District Attorney's Office, so be happy to answer any questions.
We've got some up here. Supervisor Bagwell.
Lee, actually, how is this enforced? Is it complaint-driven?
I think largely, yes. Primarily, a call to the sheriff's office, it could be. I know that the sheriff gets most of these calls, actually within a neighborhood, you know, code enforcement has been involved and gone out on them. Sometimes the calls will come to code enforcement because people don't always know who to call, but I think they usually call the sheriff's office, and it is within the enforcement of the sheriff's office.
And also, in conjunction with that, spark arresters on, because a lot of these are driven in fire-prone areas, so how is that being coincidentally addressed in this same ordinance or not?
I'm not sure what the provisions regarding spark arresters are, so, no, that is not a specific topic that has come up for inclusion within this ordinance, because this talks, this ordinance talks about on highways, on highway motorcycles that you have to have a legal muffler if you're riding a motorcycle on a street or highway. So it doesn't address all the regulations about vehicles off-highway, and I'm not sure in the code where it would. So no, but no, this doesn't address that.
Just to that, I mean, this is a process, the DA has a goal to go through the entire code and clean it up. So as we go through, we've got notes of, you know, topics like this that come up, so that way, when we go through, if there's a place, a good place to do that, then we'll go ahead and do that. It's just, you know, a timely process, but we'll make a note of that and go through, and maybe we can cross-reference that.
So I'm just interested in having either a clarification or a discussion with, I know that many people with four-wheelers actually have snowplows on the front of them, or on the back, they have drag chains that get rid of weeds and things like that for fire abatement. So I'd like to add a clarification in here to ensure that we're not stopping that process, because we've said for agricultural farming activities, but it has to be in a property zone for that purpose, so I don't know if that's the place, but I'd like to add for sure that they can snowplow and they can do weed abatement. So, thank you.
That sounds like a reasonable addition for us, and I think, I'm looking at Adrian over there, but if you make a motion to add that, I think we can come up with some verbiage that exempts that for a second reading.
So, this doesn't prevent users from using access roads that are next to residential properties, so as long as they're not staying in the area around the residences, they have the right to drive on the roads to get to, say, BLM or to the hills to ride, correct? I saw that language in here.
Yes.
It's in there.
Yes, it's the, the quick access or exit, in-and-out language.
Right, so you can drive back and forth to get to the hills as long as you don't ride around the residences?
Correct.
Okay, and then on the spark arresters, ATVs now have to be registered, correct? Do, do we know if, when you register them, if they're inspected?
Nope.
They're not inspected? You just go in, pay the fee, and get the registration?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
That temporary and immediate.
Because I don't want people to not be able to get to the hills, that's not the point of this, the point is just not to loiter around residences and disturb people in their homes.
Speaking of that, you may not know the answer to this, but let me ask, one of the common complaints that I get, and I'm sure we all get them, are, what's the type of usage available in the open area between the college and Timberline, and bordered on the north by Timberline Road and on the south by Ash Canyon Road? I mean, there, I know there's private property there, there's public property there, I've had, you know, complaints that motorcycle folks are knocking, you know, are pushing off bicycles and riders off, I guess, their bootleg trails, or some trails there. Can you help explain what the rules are in that area?
Well, I think if Parks and Rec was here, they'd have a little bit more handle on it, but knowing the area a bit, I'll, I'll take a shot at it. That is, that is property that's owned by both Carson City and the Western Nevada College. So, and again, according to this ordinance, note, they should not be riding within 500 feet of the residence, that's one thing that we have in the ordinance. On the city property, which is the detention basins, David Bruketa left, he could probably verify that they shouldn't be riding in those, those are city detention facilities, they serve a purpose, and they shouldn't be torn up by off-highway vehicles, and then outside of that, you have property that's the college, and I guess it's up to them to enforce trespassing laws on there, other than, again, the motorcycle should not be riding within 500 feet of a residence per city ordinance.
Yeah, if this, I haven't been up there for a little bit, but do, I, it's probably not near Baylorwood, but do we have signage that tells people what we can do up there and can't do?
There are signs up there, there, and that's been a, I know that's been an issue with Parks and Rec and putting up signs, and public, and public works for the detention basins as well, so they try to put up signage and put chains across the entrances and rocks, but.
All right, very good. Other questions or concerns?
To that point, because I hike up in those, in that area, there's no phone number on there to call, that's why I'm saying, if this is complaint-driven, there needs to be some sort of a contact, and if that can just be passed on in terms of signage, I think that's important.
And I suspect if you're on Carson City Connect, you could probably take a picture and send it on, all right? All right. Public comment on this issue? Anybody want to weigh in? All right, I don't see any. Board, are we ready for motion? Who wants to do it?
Bill number is 114.
I move to introduce on first reading Bill number 114, an ordinance amending Title 10, vehicles and traffic by amending a portion of Chapter 10.30 Motorcycles, Section 10.30.120 violations, to amend provisions relating to certain motorcycle violations and adding thereto a new chapter, 10.31 Off-Road Vehicles, All-Terrain Vehicles and Motorcycles that are not street-legal motorcycles, establishing various provisions relating to off-road vehicles, all-terrain vehicles, and motorcycles that are not street-legal motorcycles. With, with the amendment to add that they can be, they can use snowplows or weed abatement devices on private property owned by the user.
Second.
Everybody understand the motion? Got it? Private property owned by the user?
Just as, on the motion or discussion, so.
Discussion's in order.
Can they snowplow all the neighbors that are elderly? I, I'm just gonna tell you, that's what we do. My husband snowplows the entire elderly, so long as there's snowplowing, it's, it's meeting the objective of safety for, for homes.
I'm just wondering if the motion should be that we bring that particular language back, so then I'll change my motion to direct staff to approve the ordinance as presented today, but to bring back language regarding the use of ATVs on private property for maintenance and weed abatement and.
Yeah, I think we can do it for second reading, as long as we incorporate this language that talked, that you talked about today and bring it back to you on second reading with that language.
All right, so I'm gonna withdraw my motion, and I would prefer that we just discuss this now and then make a new motion? Because the item, item on the table is whether or not somebody can use their ATV to help maintain adjacent properties or neighbors.
Right.
Yeah, all right. So, I'm not certain how you want to proceed then. I mean, do you want to take a motion on the underlying ordinance?
No, I'd just like to hear what the other members of the board think about that.
You know, I have no difficulty with, with doing that. I think that maybe one of the ways, you know, that you can maybe protect on that is to say that, you know, it can't be a commercial use. I mean, if you're gonna do it for, for free for your neighbors, fine, but if you're, you know, I don't know if that fits it or not. You're shaking your head.
I, I don't know, I don't know if we're solving a problem by getting too specific on that, because that's really hasn't been the problem with, whatever people are doing now, going out on their ATVs and snowplowing, has been fine, hasn't caused complaints, so I don't think there's a problem there that, that needs fixing, so I think just putting the exemption in for snowplowing on private property and weed abatement on private property, at least from an enforcement standpoint, would be fine.
It's okay with me, as long as they include my driveway.
Okay, so I will make the same motion minus, minus the property owned by the owner.
And I will second that.
All right, everybody clear of what this is now?
Yes.
All right, all right. On the motion, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimous, okay. That completes that, let's take up the zoning map, a potential zoning map amendment and zoning text amendment surrounding the Carson City Airport. Go. Mr. Plummel, who's doing this?
I am.
Oh, Mr. Bonkowski, Supervisor Bonkowski, okay.
And so, this item is in front of us today as the result of a couple of issues. Originally, a lot of the land around the airport, including land north of Arrowhead Drive and east of Gonai Road, is zoned AIP, which is Airport Industrial Park. That is a very restrictive zoning that was intent, or originally intended for people that had direct access to the airport and to the runway. So, if you can see on the top blue parcel, that, those are the parcels that, that are zoned AIP, and the intent, back when the park was created, was that people would be able to build airplane hangars there and taxi in their airplanes down to the runway. Then Arrowhead Drive became a major thoroughfare, and that was no longer feasible. So, there's no longer any necessity for those parcels to be zoned AIP, because you couldn't physically take a plane from one of those parcels up there and get to the airport now. One of the other issues is that there are uses currently going on on those parcels that may or may not be allowable, so the intent here is to clean up the zoning so that actual current uses out there would be brought into compliance. And thirdly, by changing the zoning from AIP or LI to General Industrial, GI, it also allows more uses and potentially more manufacturers to build in this area for economic development reasons. So, those are the three main components of why this was brought forward. So, back in 2015, I sent letters to all of the property owners around the airport to have a public meeting with staff, property owners, and myself to get public input on whether the surrounding property owners would be interested in rezoning the parcels. So, that meeting was in December of 2015, there were maybe 20 people there, property owners, members of the Airport Authority, staff, myself, and the attorney for the Airport Authority. And the general input was that people were in favor of the rezoning with a couple of conditions, one of the conditions being on the parcels in the blue on the right that are adjacent to the airport, that because the airport falls under federal guidelines, that we would not be able to allow any federally illegal use, and we're talking about medical, medical marijuana at this point, and possibly recreational marijuana in another week, on those parcels because it could jeopardize the status of the airport. So, that was one of the conditions. The other condition was that on the parcels on the top, that there not be retail uses allowed because of the traffic that it would generate and because of safety issues, you don't want members of the public going into an industrial park in cars where there's heavy truck traffic. So, those were the two main conditions that everybody was basically agreeable on, and so the language that's in front of us today is to change the AIP and the LI zoned properties in everything in blue there to General Industrial, which allows more use, would bring into compliance uses that are currently going on that maybe are not allowable, opens up some economic development, but adds those, those conditions. Did I miss anything?
Go.
No, thank you Supervisor Bonkowski. Susan Pansky, for the record, just to follow up on that, procedurally, there are a couple ways that a zoning map and a zoning text amendment can be initiated, one of them is by the board, and so that's what's in front of you today, essentially, is to initiate that process and direct staff to begin the official zoning map and zoning text amendments that have been explained to you today. So, should the board move forward and give staff direction, then we would prepare ordinances, notify property owners, and then bring those formal items back through, we would take it to the Airport Authority, the Planning Commission, and then back to the board for final approval. So, this is the first step, it's not any change in the zoning today, it's just directing staff to move forward with this.
Thank you, I forgot that part.
So, just in general, in the explanation, I heard to bring some properties into compliance, so explain to me how, do we have somebody operating something that's not?
Well, the best example is that under AIP zoning, you can operate a machine shop solely for the use of your own manufacturing process. That doesn't make any sense anymore, because an operating machine shop, what difference does it make whether you're using it for your process or you're selling that product to a third party? It's still a machine shop, the use isn't changing, so it's to clean up issues like that. Montessori school would be grandfathered in, it would not affect them.
I'm sorry if you didn't hear me, I was falling up on what Supervisor Bagwell's, so, so the Montessori school would be.
Should not have been there pursuant to the code.
No, no, it was there prior to the.
Before AIP, it was there?
Yeah, so for clarification on the Montessori school, and I'll just point to it on this map, they're actually up here in the limited industrial zoning district, so the property that, where they're located is not proposed for change at this time.
All right, that's helpful, thank you, okay.
But it, it, that's kind of what my question is, is there any other cleanup? What I'm leaning to, is there any other issues we need to address, because it says no schools for limited industrial, and when I, just reading all the, and maybe it's a code one that will be picked up by the DA's office when they go through things, but if we've got properties operating somewhere that it's not zoned correctly, or we're not consistent in our definitions of schools throughout, because this one doesn't say except vocational, where the others say except vocational, so maybe that's just another cleanup when the DA's office goes through, so.
Well, and that's actually, the purpose here is to start the process, the public process, that's why it would go to the Airport Authority for recommendations, it would go to Planning Commission for recommendations, so that the public has an opportunity, as well as property owners or tenants in that area, to provide input on this process before we come back with final documents.
Did the Airport Authority already take a look at this on a tentative basis?
They have not taken a look at it, they, there were members of the Airport Authority Board and the Airport Authority Staff and Airport Authority Council were present at the meeting in January of 2016. They are aware and expect that this will come before them for a recommendation prior to coming back to Planning Commission or the board, that's what we have represented to them.
I didn't understand exactly if it was covered up, I apologize. What's the through-the-fence status on the right, property on the right then?
As far as the restriction that's being proposed?
Yeah, is there, can you do through-the-fence or not?
You can still do through-the-fence, and that's something that's very specific, I think, in the way that the land was deeded from the airport property. The restriction that we're proposing is that on those properties with through-the-fence access that are directly adjacent to the airport, federally illegal activities would be prohibited, to ensure that any grants or federal requirements that the airport has wouldn't be jeopardized with an adjacency of an illegal use.
Good, all right. Public comment? Anybody? Mr. White, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Board, for the record, Maurice White. In my humble opinion, I believe there should have been some conflict of interests declared this morning. I'll start with Supervisor Bonkowski, I believe you're in conflict of interest because you are a business partner with Bill Miles, and six properties that Bill Miles owns is involved in this particular zoning change, so I wonder if the District Attorney might opinionate on that.
My job is to give an opinion to the board member if they request it, and even if they did, it would be a attorney-client privilege, and only Mr. Bonkowski would be, would have that privilege to, to waive.
Thank you. Also, Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, I believe you're also in conflict, as Kemfer Crow Law Firm represents the CC Note Investment Group that Bill Miles is involved with, as well as counsel for the airport.
I don't know the counsel, I'll talk to the DA about it, I don't know that either one of those qualify, either.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll take it up with the DA, thanks.
So, if we take a look at page two of the staff report on line two, the comment there, those present were generally in favor of the change of GI zoning with two exceptions. I would submit that that comment is not entirely accurate. There was indeed several people from the Carson City Airport and Airport Authority, none of those people offered general agreement, they simply stated that, that we should exclude any federally prohibited activities. So, there were six property owners in that meeting, representing three separate owner groups. I wouldn't say that that's very much of a consensus, considering there are 64 properties on this list for changes. APN number 00501101 is the largest single property within the fence, it's listed as property number 64 on, on the list of parcels. I'm wondering why the. I'm wondering why the inner triangle is not listed for changes as well. I can tell you that in the last week, I've heard from several tenants on the airport, all of which are opposed to any changes inside the fence. Currently, there are six separate property uses taking place on the airport. Property use 140400, 410480500, 520. As you can see, the airport is already dealing with multiple uses and is perfectly capable of continuing to deal with multiple purposes. Multiple uses on the airport. There is no benefit to Carson City. There is no benefit to the Carson City Airport to further restrict the zoning on the airport. In fact, this proposal would eliminate some of the uses that are already taking place on the airport. I think we need to leave every opportunity to develop properties on the airport. We should not further restrict the uses of the properties on the airport. I don't believe it's appropriate to change a master plan zoning outside of a regularly scheduled review of the master plan. I ask you today to reject this proposal. Thank you.
So, Mr. White, I'm trying to follow along to address the concerns that I think you were trying to bring up here. And so one of the comments that you're making is that this further restricts on the airport. Can you please dive more into that for me? I'm not, I'm not clear on how this proposal is restricting. Can you point to the language or the issue for me directly?
So when you restrict this back to public regional only, there are several things on there not listed in public, public regional, one being, as Supervisor Bonkowski spoke, to machine shops. There are several machine shops on the airport that these folks use to produce their products. You have, land use 400 is general commercial, 410 is offices, professional businesses and services, 480 is commercial with minor improvements, 500 is general industrial with light industry, trucking, warehousing, and 520 is heavy industry. So if you restrict it back to the limited uses within just PR, some of these people will no longer be in compliance.
Can we respond to that?
I'd really like that. Just, there's only one property, just so I can be clear, it's item 64 is the property parcel that you're actually discussing. Just so I can bring the audience and everybody into the same. So we're talking about number 64 on the list is the only one that we're recommending to go to PR, and you're saying that's more restrictive.
Yeah, so for clarification, and this is something that was added by staff. It was not initiated by Supervisor Bonkowski. It was added by staff as a cleanup item. So the parcel that's in question is this is basically right here. So the entire airport with the property, with the exception of this area here, because the dark line represents the boundary of the zoning district, not the property boundary, the entire property is already zoned public regional with the exception of this hatched area here, which is currently zoned limited industrial. What staff is proposing to do as a part of this is to clean up the airport zoning and take the entire thing to public regional so that there isn't a split zone situation on that parcel. We're not proposing to restrict any further. We're just cleaning up this one piece, which is where, I believe, the runway is actually located.
Going back to that, that's the piece that where the boundary expanded for the runway expansion and realignment. So it's now, it's now airport property. So the change is to make the airport property zone the same as the rest of the airport property. It's not changing the zoning of the triangle area at all. Or that's not what the application would be for.
So I don't believe that the map that you're showing right there was in the, in the packet online? I don't remember seeing that map.
It was in the packet, but it was not shaded the way that it's shaded here.
Okay. That's, that's what raised my concern was taking the light industry out. If, if we'd have had that map available to see what was there, we, we could have avoided this today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Public comments? Okay, motion's in order.
I move to direct staff to initiate a zoning map amendment and zoning text amendment for certain parcels in the vicinity of the Carson City Airport from air industrial park, limited industrial, and public community to general industrial with certain land use restrictions on some of the parcels, and to modify the zoning of the Carson City Airport from public regional and limited industrial to only public regional to eliminate the split zoning that currently exists on the parcel.
There's a motion, a second discussion. On the discussion, here's, I don't believe there's, this is something I should have to disclose, abstain from. I don't mind disclosing anything, but, but I'm going to vote for this with the understanding that this just starts the process and the formal process will take, you know, will go forward. And at that time, I'll have a talk with the DA as to whether or not I should abstain from that part of this. But I don't see any conflict in just getting this thing kicked off. And I, as of right now, I don't really particularly see the conflict with the rest of it. But I'll talk, I'll work with the DA. All right? Anybody else? On the motion discussion, further discussion, hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, nay, carry, denounce. Thank you. Okay. All right. All right. Let's take up item 12. Non-action items. Supervisor Bagwell, go.
I just wanted to remind the public or anyone with, for an opportunity to bring back the Levitt concerts and stuff at the Brewery Arts Center for all of you to get your fingers going. I think there's leadership class here, so they look young enough to maybe help with this, to go online to grant.levittamp.org, voter registration page, and vote for the brewery so we can have our concerts again.
For the record, I, my wife and I both voted.
You already voted?
Voted.
Go, go, go.
All right, all right. Anybody else? Okay, we've got two important days coming up. One's Veterans Day and the other's the Marine Corps Birthday, so hurrah. All right, all right. Anything else from the board? Don't see anything? Okay, then we'll take concluding public comment into the Board of Supervisors portion of this agenda. Anybody concluding public comment? I don't see any, then are we ready to adjourn as a board? Then we'll reconvene as a board of health. Unless there's a, hearing no objection, we're adjourned as the Board of Supervisors and we'll remain in place and take up, we'll reconvene as the Board of Health, but we are adjourned as a board. We're in recess until we get going here again.[1103.78]
Computer, so that I can. Thank you. Susan Pintar, I will call the Order of the Board of Health meeting for whatever day it is today, probably November 3rd. We will begin with what?
Roll call.
Roll call. Thank you. I don't have mine on that computer.
Member Aboud?
Here.
Member Von Kowski?
Here.
Member Bagwell?
Here.
Member Furlong? Member Shirk?
Member Shirk's excused. I say that on behalf of him because he's...
No text yet.
Member Shirk is at the hospital awaiting the birth of his third grand child. And if we get notice of that during this meeting, he's going to text Nick so we can celebrate. So hopefully everything's going fine. All right. The sheriff is...
Off sherifying.
He's sherifying. Where is he this time?
Conference.
Right. He's got the sheriff here. He's at the annual state conference. Right. Okay.
For sheriffs. He's out sherifying. Weak.
Vice Chair Kroll.
Far more important for him to be here.
Can we get back to business now?
I'm just finishing the roll call. Vice Chair Kroll.
Yes.
And Chair Pintar.
I'm here.
The quorum is present.
Thank you. All right. We will open into public comment if there's anything to mention before we get going with the bodies of the reports. Hearing none, I will go on to approval of the minutes of July 21.
I move to approve the minutes of July 21 as presented.
Motion in favor of approving the minutes. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Motion carries. We will go on to item 18A, which is the Health Officers' Report. I want to say that this format of this meeting is changing somewhat and that we are not going to be giving the exhaustive reports that have so entertained you all in the past. We are choosing to focus these meetings on essentially one subject. Today's subject will be mental health in Carson City. I do want to update you a little bit on some of the other things that are going on with me and with the Health Department, so we'll start with a little bit of that. I want to say that I'm very pleased with the Healthcare Coalition meeting. The second one was held a couple of weeks ago. The purpose of the Carson City Healthcare Coalition is twofold. One is emergency preparedness among all healthcare agencies, and that's both public and private. The second is collaboration and networking so that we know who one another is and we have one another's backs. And it's working very nicely so far. The Sexual Assault Response Team is going to take place its next meeting next week, just saying to you two who are on it. If there are community concerns regarding sexual assault response within our community, I would encourage members of the community to contact members of that team. And I am the chair of it, and the members of the team are on the Get Healthy Carson City website. And lastly, I'd like to thank participants for their recent attendance at the Community Health Needs Assessment. That was a very interesting meeting. We've got lots of good information, and the next step will be to update our Community Health Improvement Plan so that we can talk about more things like, oh, I don't know, mental health. Okay. There we go. So that's for discussion only, I do believe. Got it. All right. So will you turn me on?
I don't know if you should say it like that.
Sir. Please begin my PowerPoint presentation, Mrs. Anker. All right. I'm going to preface the remarks of many of the folks who are attending here with that first slide that just disappeared.
Susan, we have to approve your report.
We need to approve your report.
Oh, you do?
Yes.
Okay. Would you please approve my report?
I would be happy to move to accept the Health Officer's Report.
A motion and second have been made to accept that briefing, coach, and report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That report goes forward. All right. Now we will turn me on. I wanted to just spend a couple of slides, more than a couple, you know how I am, talking about what mental health is. And I wanted to start with this slide to remind us all that the determinants of health have many factors. There should be something else on that one. There we go. Social and economic factors that we talk about, employment, housing, physical environment, health behaviors, that's a big part of it. Go back. Thank you. I say this to remind us all that we are a unit here in determining the health of Carson City and that we have various influences. And for example, the Board of Health does not directly influence employment, but as Board of Supervisors and as other agencies, we do. And these all help us be healthy Carson City citizens. It's interesting, the division here. You know, I'd like to blame my biology for some of me, but apparently I can only blame that for 10% of me. Go ahead. So what is mental health? And I don't need to read to you, but I will. A state of well-being in which every individual realizes his or her own potential, can cope with the normal stresses of life, can work productively, and is able to make a contribution to his or her community. I think that that's relatively self-explanatory, and there are some definitions of mental illness that we want to put out there. The National Alliance for Mental Health, we will have a representative speak there, has defined mental health as a condition that affects a person's thinking, feeling, or mood. The Centers for Disease Control has defined mental illness as a health condition characterized, I'm sorry, by alterations in thinking, mood, or behavior associated with distress and impaired functioning. And I think that those are important points, associated with distress and impaired functioning. So when we talk about mental illness, what are we talking about? And there's a few of the diseases, disorders, I should say, that you will hear thrown about. There are many more. I put depression in the middle where your eyes would land on it first because it's one of the more common of the mental health disorders that we deal with. But all of these others are out there in our community. So a few quick stats. One in five adults experience a mental health condition every year. One of the ones that we just mentioned on the previous slide or some of the others. One in five. Okay, look around us. Yes, that's us here in the room. It's lots of us. Most commonly, depression and anxiety disorders.
Can I ask?
Sure.
So when we say depression, can I understand that? Is that for a moment in time or a prolonged?
No. It would be the criteria of clinical depression.
Okay.
Yes.
It's like, what?
Yeah. Which, what is a depression, Joe? Two weeks of a persistently...
Depressed, understate.
Yeah, thank you.
Two weeks?
At least two weeks, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Six of 10 adults live with a serious mental illness. And I put this up here for two reasons. One is to say that it's here, but also that these are the disorders that get public attention but do not necessarily reflect the majority of mental health disorders in our community. Seven of 10 children in that age range have a diagnosable mental disorder, primarily impulse disorders, of which ADHD is one, and depression disorders.
Susan, I found that particularly disturbing. And how much is diet looked at with regards to that?
There's definite impact of diet and access to healthy foods. It kind of goes back to that first diagram that I said, is that there are many impacts to that. And children are particularly affected by socioeconomic factors because, as you know, children are disproportionately affected by poverty in our country and our community.
You know, those equate to 60% of adults in the United States have a serious mental illness?
Six percent.
Six percent.
Six of, oh, 6% would be right. Okay.
But look at the children.
Well, look up here. No one knows.
See, I've been refraining from saying that for the last 10 minutes. You had to go there.
And I had to do it, yeah. All right. Now, another interesting thing is half of mental health conditions begin by mid-adolescence. You don't start to hear about, you hear about children who have attention deficit disorder, sometimes with childhood depression, but you really start to hear about mental health conditions in late adolescence and early twenties. And I think Mr. Stokes will back us up on that because he worries most about the high school students when it comes to their mental health. And then more than 2/3 of Americans, here's the good news, more than 2/3 of Americans who have a mental illness live in the community and lead productive lives. They're all of us. So I don't, I put this up here as a positive because the stigma associated with mental health is huge. And we have to look around and say, hey, all right, I know I or somebody else have a mental health condition, but I'm doing okay. It's Carson City statistics, and we don't have any specific mental health statistics for Carson City. So what these are, are abstracted, if you will, from what our population is. We have about 2% of Nevada's residents. For some reason, I like that statistic. We're 2% of Nevada. So if we abstract that, 7,700 of our citizens have a mental health condition at any point in time. That's the 20% of adults. And the 6% would be the 2,000 with a serious mental health. So that we have a significant population, if you look just at numbers, who need assistance with mental health. So what do we do? Well, I'm going to go back to our picture. And I'm also going to go to our list. In the back of the room and on your table is something called Mental Health Providers, Carson City, Nevada, November 2016. This is a list that reflects yesterday's news, but I think we can all use it as a resource within our community, within our populations. It tells us about the resources that are available to the citizens of Carson City for their mental health needs. And we're going to hear from many of those folks representing agencies here, and they're going to help tell us about what they do, who they see, and where they see gaps in our service. Any other questions or concerns hereon? All right. So I think that I will ask Ms. Becca and Dr. Joe and Ms. Jessica to come to the front, please. And they will introduce...
Audrey asked if she could present for us.
Of course. She has 12 seconds.
It will quickly become depression. It was unannounced.
Now, if anybody wants to go to the back of the room and pick up this, you can kind of make a little checkmark of who's being, who's talking of these agencies that we're talking about. So, Joe, hit it. Start us off. Who are you? What do you do?
This is Dr. Joe McKellister. I'm the Director of Forensic Health Services for both the Douglas County and Carson City Sheriff's Department. I'm not really sure how to structure this. I know time is limited, but I'll tell you that how things have changed dramatically in the last nearly four years now is when Richard Whitley, from the Director of Health and Human Services, approached the Sheriff's Department and said to Sheriff Furlong and myself, what are we doing about this delivery of services in our community? What's working and what's not? And if I could hand it off to you, what would you do about it? So that was four years ago, February. So February 17th will be the fourth year anniversary of something called the Forensic Assessment Services Triage Team. And what that did was address sort of a hybrid approach by dealing with community mental health service providers within a criminal justice system. Because you've all heard the old and kind of tired language that jails have become the de facto mental health facilities of our time. The problem is, we've been saying that for at least two decades, if not longer. So what we decided to do was build a community-based model of delivery through the criminal justice system because some of our most impaired and most troubled people are coming through our doors in a revolving way that's not being addressed well. What that did was it opened, what we, to accomplish that, what we did is we opened the doors of the jail to the community of providers within our city. So they were coming into the jail and sort of prepping our inmates and preparing them for treatment. After they met with them the very first time, there was a treatment plan in place. And with that came individual groups in the jail, or individual counseling, individual groups, and possibly medication stabilization. In return, what we did is we took our criminal justice system and put it into the communities out there. So what you have is a very valuable overlap without duplication. And just to give you a real quick example, the individual therapist in my jail is Mary Bryant. You know her to be also the Director of Community Counseling Center. She's also the coordinator of the Mental Health Court under Judge Tatro. So three roles, uniquely different, but because of the overlap, we fill in the cracks in the system. We also have a, maybe I should define the FAST team in the jail, there's three major disciplines we try to hit. Substance abuse should be obvious, mental health, of course, and functional needs, primarily through the Ronwood Family Resource Center. So you, in that first slide, talked about so many of those functional needs that we often overlook. Substance abuse and mental health are obvious, but it's the functional needs that are often overlooked. So it's those three disciplines that are in the jail. But within that framework, we also have my staff leaving the jail. So I have Dave Ramsey as a nurse that prescribes medications. He also works for two days a week at Carson Mental Health, seeing the FAST clients that were once in the jail, and seeing our Mental Health Court clients that are currently in the program. When CCC was an inpatient unit, we actually turned it into a dual diagnosis program when FAST got on board by sending him there so he could deal with the medication issues. So we expanded his services there as well and expanded what CCC could do on an inpatient basis back in the day. Kathleen Biscay is the representative from Carson Mental Health that comes to the jail. She obviously works for Carson Mental Health, and she's the clinical representative for the Mental Health Court. So you can see there's all these kind of overlaps without duplicating services. And so that's been largely the design of the FAST program, is trying, for the most part, not to get them arrested at all. But in the immediate terms, all we had was a program designed within the system of the jail and working our way out from there and inviting people in. But then that led to greater efforts. We were allowed then to expand our critical incidents response training, and MOST teams. And so now we have a system in place that we're trying to intervene before they ever come to the jail, to the MOST team. And Becca Bach was actually honored by NAMI on October, what, 13th, for her efforts in that, at the Governor's Mansion. So that was a really big deal for the MOST team and all of her efforts across her, really her career.
Becca, let's talk a little bit about MOST.
I was going to have Deputy Loyola talk about it, but actually, the MOST team started in...
And what does MOST stand for here?
The Mobile Outreach Safety Team.
Thank you.
So basically, it's partnering a licensed clinical social worker with a deputy. And in Carson, we have three deputies that are currently running on MOST, and they're CIT, so the Crisis Intervention Trained Deputies, and that's one of the requirements. And we run, in Carson, 24 hours a week, and our primary efforts are in, really, it is jail diversion efforts to keep, to identify people in the community that have mental health needs, try to intercept them at their, in the community, and try to get them into their needed resources and level of care. So we were just out, I mean, I could talk about the cases we just did, there's people that are very seriously ill, they're not receiving services. So our job is to identify those, other deputies identify them, and they give us referrals or dispatch will call us, and we'll go to their homes and try to get them hooked up. So that's our primary job. And did you want to say anything about it?
Well, no, not really. I mean, you guys are pretty much already touched on everything that I was going to say, but yeah, that's pretty much what we do. I've been doing it for, it's going to be a year almost, and I enjoy it too. And being part of the MOST team has helped me understand the mental illness we have in this community because it's a big issue. It's a big, big issue. And for the longest time, what we would do, we would respond to the call, take them to jail, and that'd be the end of it. But it was just a revolving door, constantly just the same thing over and over. Now, it's a great tool because now, like she was saying, we could offer them the assistance and take them other places rather than the jail. Because the reality of it, the jails are not designed for people with mental illness. The deputies are not training the jail to deal with that, with the mental illness. So it put a lot of stress on the justice system, on the deputies. And like I said, so far, it's been a great tool, and looking forward to keep moving forward with it.
Question, sorry, for? Just in general, what you're seeing on the FAST team and the MOST team, are you seeing that you actually have sufficient resources for the programs to be successful? Or you really don't have the community resource? I mean, it's great to have the opportunity, but if you don't have anywhere to actually refer them for service. So I'm trying to get the whole picture and the whole linkage, and where are our true gaps?
Can we have you both identify yourselves for the record, too, please?
Thank you.
So Becca Bach, I would say that we definitely, we are blessed here in Carson because we do have a lot of resources, but there are very huge gaps. And so that's one of the frustrating parts, is we can identify people with great needs. And so regarding Jerry Psych Services, there's a big hole in those, and...
Geriatric psychiatric care?
Yes. And also, I believe we would benefit from assisted outpatient treatment here, which Las Vegas has and Reno is soon to get. And that's for people who are not following through with treatment that, I mean, Joe, you probably could talk to them about that. It's a big gap, I think.
Dr. McKellister from Carson City Sheriff's. The assisted outpatient treatment programming has been in about 44, 46 of 50 states. We are one that did not have it, but it recently went under pilot under Las Vegas. It's being moved to Washoe County. It's a civil proceeding where you can go before a court, and unlike a legal 2000, which is involuntary admission for up to 72 hours, this is a bit of a step down, but it's still a civil proceeding where you approach a judge and make a case, a difficult case it is, but make the case that this person should be court-ordered to go into treatment and follow all treatment recommendations. In some states, a failure to do that can result in you being brought back before the judge and sanctioned almost criminally. They have not adopted that piece in Nevada, so that hook is missing. But it's still proven to be a really valuable tool now that it's been instituted in Las Vegas. And it's a way to get people who are kind of chronically undertreated or not in treatment at all to engage services. And again, the focus of all of our work is really around diversion, whether it's Mental Health Court, Drug Courts, MOST team, CIT. We're trying to divert people away from the emergency rooms in the jails, which is the most expensive level of care, and of course, facilities not designed for long-term care.
And so can you tell me, on average, then, for those clients that you're coming into contact, what percentage are receptive to the service versus just want to refuse the services? Maybe it's a nice way to say it. Not compliant, whatever.
This is Becca from... This is Becca from MOST. I would say that we have great successes on very difficult clientele, very complex situations, and we take the great pride in some of these individuals actually receiving injections and living a high-functioning life. But there are those individuals, I consider, that are just on a running caseload that are in denial of having any problems, and they're completely psychotic. And so, we just, we don't give up on them. We just keep going to see them and offering them services. And we've broken through on some very difficult cases, so we just continue to try.
Thank you. Jessica, would you like to introduce yourself and talk a little?
Yes, thank you. So, Jessica Flood, Regional Behavioral Health Coordinator from Carson Tahoe. I assist the community in kind of organizing around jail diversion and also behavioral health services. And I just wanted to give you a quick update on what we're doing as a community with the Stepping Up Initiative. The Board of Supervisors passed that this last May. And since then, we've had some pretty great progress. The first step of the Stepping Up Initiative is to create a Behavioral Health Task Force. And so, we've been having that monthly for the past five months and getting a pretty diverse crowd. But I just want to put it out there, whoever wants to attend, and this goes for anyone in the community, we'd love to have you there. So, for those who don't know what the Stepping Up Initiative is, it's really about what we're talking about here. It's diverting individuals that have mental illness from jails. And I passed out the Sequential Intercept Model. Really, for those of you that don't have it, it's this idea that as people move into the criminal justice system, we have opportunities to intervene. So, CIT and MOST is at the front end. If you happen to get into jail, you've got FAST that can help triage there. So, the first step of the Stepping Up Initiative is to create a Behavioral Health Task Force. We've done that. The second step is really looked at, looking at data gathering and evaluation, which is a far greater task. We're kind of in the weeds there, but getting a lot of help from the state. So, that's good. The third step is having a community workshop where we all sit down and really look at what we have, the resources that are in place, and then also the pieces that we could probably improve upon or start filling in those gaps. So, we're working right now on developing that workshop. We're having a UNR Cooperative Extension Facilitator come in and do it. And we would love as much participation as possible. Because really, we're all kind of in these silos, and it's important for us to get to know what each other does and how we can work together to be more effective. So, look out for that coming up in the next couple of months.
Thank you. Questions for Jessica? All right. I would like to point out that on our list, our resource list that I've handed out, the FAST and the MOST Teams are considered specialized mental health services for the purpose of our list, and we'll be hearing from others within there. But in the meanwhile, do you have any announcements to make, Mr. Sherick?
I do. I'm sorry to interrupt this meeting. I'm a proud grandfather. My daughter gave birth at 8:39 this morning to Marshall James Jacks. Weight was seven pounds, three ounces, same that she was when she was born.
Ah. Thank you. Yay!
Mother is doing very well.
Okay.
Grandfather.
Grandfather's holding up. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, I, thank you all for appearing. Like I mentioned, the, in our list, the Mobile Outreach Team, the Forensic Assessment Team are listed as three and four. Jessica is actually funded through the Nevada Division of Public and Behavioral Health. So, she, I listed her unofficially as number three under General Information and Support Services. Thank you. I would like next to call on Jose. Jose represents, well, is Sierra Counseling and Neurotherapy. But she would appear as one of our private practitioners in town.
I'm going to leave some of these in the back of the room.
Yeah, good idea. You got two minutes.
My name is Jose Perrine, and thank you very much for this opportunity. I think this is a wonderful idea, as someone in private practice, to be able to present what we have for the community, very different. Usually, we hear about public agencies. The agency, our private practice, is Sierra Counseling and Neurotherapy. And we have been in the community since the early 1990s. We are located in the Eagle Medical Center. Myself and two of my partners were some of the original owners of that building. So, we've been there for 13 years. SCN is a private practice. We call it SCN for short, Sierra Counseling and Neurotherapy. Our staff, we have a psychiatrist, Ellen McBride, who's on staff. She's there once a week, and sees patients pretty much clear into the evenings when she is there. We have a psychologist, Dr. William Jenkins. I am a marriage and family therapist and duly licensed alcohol and drug counselor. Jerry Chinani is a licensed alcohol and drug counselor, as well as nationally certified biofeedback, neurofeedback specialist. We have another part-time therapist, Erin Worrell, who is a licensed alcohol and drug counselor and marriage and family therapist. Together, we probably have over 100 years of experience and education. All of our clinicians have a background in treating seriously mentally ill patients, having worked for the state hospitals a number of years. We address diagnosis ranging from adjustment disorders to more severe bipolar disorders, schizophrenia. So, we have a wide range. We treat all ages, from early childhood, typically not before three years old. And they do have to be verbal, have verbal skills before we will see them. But from young ages, clear into geriatric treatment. We have no federal, state, local funding. We are funded through insurance, through our work, and through our private practice. However, we are a Medicaid facility. We are what's called a Medicaid Specialty Clinic. So, we do have medical oversight with our psychiatrists. We are also a state-certified drug and alcohol evaluation center. We are certified every two years for that certification. As a DUI center evaluation center, we do the evaluation for agencies, you know, for the police, for the courts. We also do for the Board of Nursing, State Board of Nursing. So, we will not only do the evaluation, but as a rural community, we are permitted to do the treatment also. So, we provide early intervention through intensive outpatient services for drug and alcohol, substance abuse. We capture not only the area of Carson City. We see clients from Fallon, Yarrington, Reno, Lake Tahoe, and as far away as Bridgeport. We've had people come to our agency from those districts and areas. We have a number of specialties. My specialty is working with victims of domestic violence. I've written a book about it. And for the last 15 or so years, I have done it, facilitated a weekly group for victims of domestic violence, for advocates to end domestic violence. And I am sorry to say that in the 15 to 20 years that I've been doing that work once a week, that room has never been empty. In fact, we usually have to bring in extra chairs. That is the degree of domestic violence that is in our community. So, I see them in the group, advocates, and I also then offer those services through my private practice. Jerry Chinani, our specialist in neurofeedback and biofeedback, is, does a lot of work with children with, and adults with ADHD. We have what's called a Test of Variables of Attention, which is a computerized test that will give you a number so that you can see how the client improves over time after treatment. So, we have a measurable instrument that we use for that. We see a lot of kids with ADHD. If you're interested, I know a lot of trivia and research. The last research I read on ADHD, which was very interesting, said that people who use Tylenol, acetaminophen, while they were pregnant, their children had a higher incidence of ADHD. Isn't that fascinating? So, I read a lot of research. And that was the last that I had, because we're seeing an increase in the number of students with ADHD. We do coordinate with the schools. Oh, sorry, time, time's up? Okay. Well, thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you. I think we're interested in seeing, from your perspective, what gaps in service you see in our community.
Gaps. One of, we have a very bad opiate addiction problem here with young people. And I used to do some services out of Carson High School years ago. They had a program of early intervention where the parents were required to come to a class with the students. I think it was a three-week class. And so, we, anybody who was in trouble at school for using drugs or drug-related, alcohol-related, we did the program at the school in the evenings, and the parents came with it. I think we need more of that type of intervention where we get that early address to the problem. We are seeing people who have excessive insurance deductibles. It is not unusual for us to see people who have a $10,000 deductible. One even has a $12,000 deductible. And so, that prohibits them from coming in early for treatment. If their insurance had lower deductibles, they could come in. Sometimes, we will facilitate a payment, cash payment, as opposed to using their insurance, because it's so out of reach. Another thing we have, can we talk about geriatric need? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm, we're only allowed a limited amount of time, because we have lots of people to talk. I do thank you for your participation. It does bring us to a relatively new development that we received a report about that Jose mentioned, that a, and Ben Bianchi from Juvenile Services is not here, but the juvenile equivalent of the FAST and MOST Teams is being instituted. It's called JAST, or Juvenile Justice Assessment Services Triage Team. So, that, we're looking forward to that. I would like next to call on Joni Laird. And Caroline, okay. I'll let you both come. They are with Carson Tahoe Behavioral Health.
No.
Carson Tahoe Hospital. Yes, thank you.
He just left. Been there for hours.
My name is Joan Goddard. I'm one of the social workers at Carson Tahoe. Our, what we came to talk about is we've created a community coalition of the different resources and that, in the high utilizers of EMS, the Sheriff's Department, and the ER for usually mental health issues. We, Carolyn was one of the instigators of the coalition, so I'll let her describe what we do there.
My name's Caroline Longray. I'm the Transition Care Case Manager at Carson Tahoe Hospital, which means I have several things I do. I look at the high utilizers in the ER, high utilizers in the hospital. And then, we started looking at high utilizers within the community. We look, we usually run about 10 to 12 people. We meet once a month, and we have agent people from, with the ER, case management, Carson City Sheriff's Department, MOST, FAST, Carson City Health and Human Services, Ron Wood, FISH, Guardian's Office, Rural Regional, jail staff, including Dr. Joe, behavioral health services, and Carson Mental Health. And we get together and we talk about, this is really on an individual basis. And what we've discovered is there was big gaps. It was the first opportunity we had all got together and be able to say, "Oh, I can do this for you if you can take care of this for this individual." And we've been able to do a lot of interventions that way. Whether it's just getting somebody portable oxygen can keep them from over utilizing certain resources. And we also get kind of game plans together. If someone gets, sees someone, we plan on who we're, what we're going to do. The community has asked for ER care plans, which I facilitate with the ER doctors to not give out benzodiazepine or opiates, those kinds of things, which helps that patient. They still get treated, but they don't receive refills of those medications. And it's created great connections and communications that we've never really had. No one knew what anybody else did. And it's created that trust that we're able to call and circumvent some of those problems. Or when they do get to the ER, we know they're coming. We know we need Joan. We know that she needs to get involved. I need to get involved. We're all working together to try and get these people to a safer environment.
And I guess I would point out that these are people who are both publicly and privately insured, as well as uninsured. Does that go without saying?
Most of the people we deal with are probably Medicare, Medicaid, or no insurance. That's probably more, I don't, I don't think we have anyone who's privately insured at all. And that's, that's a challenge in itself, is trying to find primary cares to take care of them, trying to find mental health, who takes Medicaid or Medicare, or nothing. And then, those people that Becca talked about, that we have to just keep working forward. Some of those people stay on that list. We've been together two years now, and some of them still are on there. But we don't give up, because there's, you never know when that opportunity's going to come.
I think also, this has been a good thing, because we're not duplicating services. We now know that they're going to FISH, so at Carson Tahoe, we don't need to make sure that they have a bus pass or someplace to go. So, that's been the big benefit of it. No duplication of services, plus everyone's aware. And we kind of minimize the borders for these people, saying, you know, you know what you have to do to get that service, so.
Cool. All right. Questions for either of these two ladies? I think that there is no one here from Carson Tahoe Behavioral Health today, so I'm going to ask you to do a little summary of the services that Carson Tahoe Behavioral Health offers.
As far as at the ER, for the people who come in, like on a legal 2000, that's the involuntary commitment for mental health issues. They, in our ER, will do the assessment, and our psychiatrist does come in and certify that, so we can go ahead and move them to whatever next level of care they need to do within that 72-hour period. And they do have a primary, either LCSW or a nurse, Licensed Clinical Social Worker. Sorry. And they come in and do a preliminary, and then the psychiatrist comes in. And she's actually been a big benefit with us, because she is providing medication adjustments and actual psychiatric diagnoses. Over at the Behavioral Health, they do have geriatric psychiatric, they have addictions, and then they have just general psychiatric treatment. You know, they've just added a new unit, so I'm not clear. They went from, I'm just going to say like 60 beds, maybe, in total, with the three different units. And then, in, by the end of the year, they're looking at opening a psychiatric ER in the old hospital, in the old ER. So, they're going to take those patients out of our ER, which minimizes the impact on services at the primary ER.
So, I think there are some very positive things happening at Carson Tahoe to address both inpatient and outpatient mental health needs. So, are there questions for the ladies? Thank you. All right. And I'm, is Kendra here from Cornerstone? I'm just going to jump around. The folks we have, many have been invited, and those who are here, I'd like them to just tell us a little bit about what you do. You have a couple of minutes.
There we go. Cornerstone provides a variety of therapeutic services, both individual, family, and couples therapy. We try to address the family unit as a whole as best as we can. We also offer group therapy for children and teens. In that environment, we can provide them with coping skills, In that environment, we can provide them with coping skills, redirect their behaviors, and provide them with a safe place to share and relate to each other. With, we also have psychiatric medication management through telemeds. However, we do require the clients to be compliant with therapy in conjunction with that service. We also have neuro biofeedback therapy, which has been a new development that has been really exciting and beneficial. Some of our in-home and community services include rehabilitative, basic skills training, psychosocial rehabilitation, to provide our clients with practical skills needed to function. Our case management services have been vastly beneficial. And I think that that service has allowed us to do a lot of public and even private collaboration with different agencies to help meet the health and material needs of our clients and decrease the strain on the family. We are a fee-for-service Medicaid agency. And so those services really help us address some of the socioeconomic gaps that they may be experiencing. We worked with disabled and socio-economically challenged families. We take a multidisciplinary approach to meet the individual needs of our clients. And we are currently servicing Carson City, as well as outreach into Dayton and Gardnaville. We also have a network of sister companies in the rurals, so that if our clients move, we're able to have some continuity of care. And some of those agencies are in, Winnemucca has, is Cornerstone. We also have companies in Reno, Fernley, Love Lock, Yerington, Fallon. Perrump. And a lot of the focus of our services are to rehabilitate individuals to reach their highest level of functioning. Some of the gaps that we are seeing are in the resources that are available, as well as the fact that because we take Medicaid, we are always looking for places that we can collaborate with for individuals with other insurances or that are underinsured.
When you say resources available, what specifically are you talking about?
We work a lot with individuals that are dealing with homelessness. Housing's a big one in Carson City that has been. We're working on it. And then reaching out, we try our best to collaborate with the schools, with different agencies like DCFF, Health and Human Services, FISH, Ron Wood. All of those resources have been really great. I just find that the population is, that is in need, there's only so much that can go around. And with our in-home services and our community services, like case management and BST and PSR, Medicaid has been decreasing the approval for those services considerably. And that area really gives us an opportunity to work in the home and in their natural environment, where the therapists, they see them an hour or a few a week. But it only gives us kind of a limited picture, whereas some of those services have been really beneficial in giving us a better view of what the family's needs are, rather than just that individual, what they're reporting at the time.
Thank you. Yes.
So why do you think that Medicaid is decreasing the in-home service? Are they not seeing the success in it? Or what would be their rationale? What's happening there?
I would really like to know. Especially with the BST and PSR services.
We have no idea what those mean.
So those are basic skills training, things like parenting skills, time management, organization, things for basic level of needs to function. And then the PSR is psychosocial rehabilitation. That includes things like anger management, anxiety management, but more at the practical skill level. I think that those services, we need to justify them, and that's important. They need to be medically necessary. But sometimes it's really hard for us to figure out why certain individuals get approved for them and certain don't. And how they have really been focusing on, is this client in medication management? Have they been treated with meds? And how long have they been in lower level of services with therapy and things of that nature? But some of our clients are only with us for a period of time of compliance, or if they don't feel like they have enough support, we see sometimes them needing a higher level of care before they can even get those services.
So that's a gap, sometimes it's making that transition to the higher level of care, is that what you're saying?
Sometimes. We very much try our best to meet our clients' needs and meet them at their level, but we are an outpatient center. And so there's certain circumstances, they have to be leveled up.
Their brochure refers to Atlas Counseling. Who is that?
Atlas is one of our sister companies, and we have a variety of, they offer the same services. They're just sister companies that we work with throughout Northern Nevada.
Is it Atlas, or is it Cornerstone, that's doing business in Carson City?
So Cornerstone's in Carson and Winnemucca.
Ladies?
Hi, I'm Georgia. I work with Kendra at Cornerstone. One of the things that Ms. Laurie had asked was, how is Medicaid justifying the reduction of their services? Recently, as of July, they've started to ask us for more concrete evidence. When as before, it was given through something called a prior authorization request, which is where we have to submit to request services, where that gives a very small detail of specifically for that client that we're requesting services for. While just recently, they've started asking for, as a whole, for us to take small sample sets of what the clients are producing for us as our company to be able to present to Nevada Medicaid. So that's recently, just as of July, they've started doing that. So hopefully, that will be able to aid in our, in our ability to be able to provide them a better scope of what we're actually able to accomplish with our client set. But up until then, that was really all they had asked us for, was that part.
I'm Jenna Morton. I'm also working with Cornerstone and Atlas Counseling. I think one thing that I want to add is that, at the beginning of your presentation, you noted the 1 in 5 adults that have mental illness, and that's kind of our main focus, is that 20%, where we try to refer out some of the more difficult, like severe mentally ill people. And we're also working a lot with the children, that seven and 10 children with those mental illnesses as well, so.
Thank you. Questions for the ladies? Appreciate you coming. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Segue a little bit. Mr. Stokes, would you like to come visit us? The Carson City School District has recently been fortunate enough to institute a program that will, I think, be very beneficial for the mental health of our little darlings.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mayor Kroll, members of the board, it's a pleasure to be here. Thanks for this invitation. Of course, as a public schools, we take all comers.
And you're, I'm sorry, who are you?
I'm sorry, Richard Stokes, Superintendent Carson City Schools. I didn't mean to say that. As a public school system, of course, the members of our community have the right to send their children to our schools. And Dr. Pintar, I appreciate the numbers that you put up at the beginning of your presentation. We're seeing truth to the numbers that you showed. And some of our children are suffering as a result of a variety of conditions. And some of those conditions, of course, are shown as the kids come to school. And we have then the responsibility to provide services and help as we can. Like many other public service agencies, schools have suffered and lost services as a result of the Great Recession and economic challenges that our state and nation faced. Recently, however, in 2015 legislative session, there was state money set aside for the support of social workers in schools. Carson City School District applied for that grant, and consequently, we were able to hire, really not hire, but contract with licensed social workers. And we have 13 of those individuals who are functioning in our schools as full-time individuals, and three that are part-time. Just for your information, five of those are currently assigned to Carson High School, one at Pioneer High School, three are at Carson Middle, one are at Eagle, is at Eagle Valley Middle School. And then we have one social worker per elementary school, so six additional folks. One of the other aspects of the work that we do, because not all of the conditions that are maybe undesirable in school-aged children are associated with mental health issues. We also see issues that are caused by people living in poor conditions. Children who don't maybe have the role model that is helpful for them to be successful, not only in school, but also in society. And so our social work, pardon me, our social workers really help out as they provide services to families of these children, and also to the children themselves. So they help with attendance issues, behavior, hygiene. They help connect families with community services, as it may apply to having access to food, health, housing, and just academic support in general. And so we feel very fortunate. This program began last April. And of course, as the school year goes, we barely had time to find, hire, and apply services. But this year, we've had the help of the social workers in our schools since the beginning of the school year. And with the first quarter, rather, behind us now, we've seen a very valuable contribution that these folks are making in the lives of these students, and also just in the overall operations of our schools. So in general, we're very grateful to have this benefit, and we're taking advantage as we can to the fullest. You have any questions for me?
Richard, how do you identify these students within the school system so that they can get the necessary help?
Well, and as word has gotten out that we have these service providers on our campus, our counselors are able to help connect kids. We also have students that end up in the principal's office or the vice principal's office because of behavioral conditions. And so oftentimes, you know, before a student can actually learn, they have to feel like their other major components of their life are somewhat in order. And so as vice principals and principals meet with challenged students, they also call in those social workers who then say, well, hey, let's see, maybe this outburst that occurred in a class is because you didn't have breakfast today. So let's figure out a way. Or maybe you've got a sore tooth that's making it difficult for you to think about schoolwork. And so just having that extra level of intervention has really, really been very helpful.
So, Richard, you mentioned that they were hired on a grant. So is that a one-year grant, two-year grant? What are you looking at there? Is this a service you're gonna start in the school, and then we're gonna lose it?
Thank you for that question. And you're certainly correct. The grant is made available by the legislature, but it is in statute. So unless it's repealed in the upcoming session, it would appear to me that this money is going to be available, at least it's on the books right now. So we're planning to move forward, but you're right, we would not be able to hire this many people who are degreed and are specialists in their area. So we're grateful, and we'll use it for as long as we have it.
Mr. Superintendent, I'm not trying to draw a connection between homelessness and mental illness, but could you give me, or give all of us an idea of, one, what's the, what's the number of your student population that is, perhaps homeless or no permanent place to stay at night? And what's the percentage of that to your total student population?
That number is about 560 students this year. And that seems to have been relatively stable throughout the past several years, especially as we've seen economic difficulties. And we have 7,591 students in our school district.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming. Dee, where are you? I'm gonna ask Dee Raymond to come. She's from Carson Counseling and Supportive Services. And tell us a little bit about your agency's role in the community, and where you see some of the gaps in service.
Hi, good morning. My name is Dee Raymond. I'm with Carson Counseling and Supportive Services. And we are part of the state mental health system. So in the South, we have Southern Nevada Adult Mental Health. In the North, in Reno, we have Northern Nevada Adult Mental Health. And then Carson is part of rural clinics. We are the largest rural clinic office here in the state of Nevada. We serve about 450 clients. I've given you an overview of some of the services that we provide, but basically, we are the safety net for the community. We will work with people who are underinsured, not insured, the serious persistent mental health issues that we assist with. We have med clinic, we have clinicians, service coordinators. We work with NAMI, and we have a mental health tech on staff. So we are person-centered, so our services align with client need.
You mentioned you have about 450 clients, and those are primarily Medicaid insured clients? Or what's, what would be the financial demographic?
The financial demographic, they could be Medicaid, Medicare, uninsured, and some private insurance, yes.
Are your services, on the Carson City website, we have a special button for veterans. Go to that link, and it'll tell all the services that are available for veterans. Are you listed on that, do you know?
I'm not sure, no.
I'd ask you to take a look when, because I think it's important to have all the list of resources. I should have said that of all of our providers that have come up here today.
Sure.
Because it's supposed to be a one-stop shop for all services that veterans can, as well as others can access, but primarily veterans. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dee. I think I'm gonna segue over to you, Mr. Freeland. He's from, well, he'll tell you, but he's from Nevada Health Centers, which kind of occupies it in between public, in between the public and private sectors.
Good morning. I'm Jim Freeland. I'm a Licensed Clinical Social Worker, working at Sierra Health Center here in Carson City. I've been with the agency for about a year now. And traditionally, they've been a medical clinic, and they recognized that there was a need to have integrated behavioral health care on-site for the medical patients that they treat. So they started offering behavioral health care here in Carson City, as well as at a couple locations in Southern Nevada, to focus on patients that have a high comorbidity rate between having various medical conditions like diabetes or COPD, things like that, and also having substance abuse and/or mental health difficulties, and being able to treat those folks on-site at the same facility. So that's been my focus for the past year. And so the referrals come internally from the medical providers that are on the staff at the clinic, providing family medical care, OB-GYN services to the patients there. And those providers, in turn, refer patients to me for behavioral health care. Our practice model is brief solution-focused therapy, using a cognitive behavioral approach. I provide assessments, do diagnosing, outpatient mental health care, referral to other community resources. Another function I've been putting energy into is getting connected to local resources. Previous presenters had talked about the Behavioral Health Task Force. I've been participating in that, as well as in the community collaboration team. It was also spoken of earlier, as a way to integrate what we do with the community at large. In terms of gaps, I'll echo what previous presenters have mentioned with respect to demand exceeding supply when it comes to demand exceeding supply when it comes to behavioral health needs in the community, whether it's outpatient counseling, psychiatry, crisis intervention, the need is bigger than the available supply. That seems to be one thing that's jumped out at me in the brief period of time I've been here in Carson, about a year again. So, any questions for me?
So, can you help me with the gap? Is it we don't have sufficient providers, or there's insufficient funding mechanisms to meet the need? Because that could be-- or is it both?
Might be some of both. You know, in the case of psychiatry, we have many patients we would like to refer to psychiatry for more specialized evaluation and medication management who have a severe and persistent mental illness. And yes, there are psychiatrists in the community, but the availability in terms of appointment times is a shortage of that. So there's a need there, for example. And then the wait time to get in for traditional outpatient counseling. In my case, it's three or four weeks to get in, which is a long time to wait. If somebody's depressed or anxious or having some other issue, you'd prefer to get them in quickly to get started on getting them to help. And I think that there's a similar situation with other outpatient providers. It takes some time to get in for that first appointment to get started.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, thank you.
Is there someone here from NAMI? National Alliance for Mental Illness? I thought-- okay, never mind. Well, not never mind, but they-- National Alliance for Mental Illness is, as the name implies, a national organization with local outreach, and we do have a very strong developing program there, and they are a very good general resource, and I was hoping somebody would be able to come and tell us a little bit about that. I believe that we have-- is Genevieve here? There you are.
My name is Genevieve Ramos.
Sorry.
That's okay. Thank you very much for hearing me today. I am the director at Serenity Mental Health. We share a parking lot with this facility. I also brought pamphlets, which I'll hand out. I'm also on the board of directors for the Life Change Center, so I'd also like to speak on behalf of them as well today, if that's okay. Serenity Mental Health is an outpatient service provider. We have approximately 18 clinicians right now, varying from MFTs, CPCs--
What are those people?
I apologize. It's marriage and family therapists, clinical professional counselors, licensed alcohol, drug, and gambling clinicians, and licensed clinical social workers. So we basically have the entire gamut of the mental health field within our facility. We also have Dr. Ronald Centric, who is our onsite psychiatrist. He's there two days a week to provide the psychiatric care for those who need medication management. Additionally, as some other facilitators here in town, we also have the PSR, which is Psycho-Social Rehabilitation Service, and Basic Skills Training, BST. Those are outpatient care services where specially-trained individuals who are not quite at that master's or doctoral level have just a little bit of specialty training in the mental health field, and they can actually go into individuals' homes and within the community and within the schools and assist people on the spot with their needs. Gaps in services, I'd like to echo what the previous gentleman said. Psychiatry has been somewhat limited in this town. There's a lot of tele-med going on. There's a lot of doctors from Las Vegas and other places who are tuning in via the computer. It's not as personal as having somebody face-to-face. I've heard a lot of-- I don't want to say complaints, because it's what we have to work with, and so it's fantastic that we have that. It would be more beneficial to have more face-to-face individuals here. Also, emergency care. The previous gentleman is absolutely right. The waiting list is tremendous to get in. To see a therapist at our clinic, it is approximately three to four weeks. To get in with our psychiatrist, you have to see a therapist first, and his waiting list is about two months. A lot of individuals who need emergency care have nowhere to go. We refer them to the emergency room, or we refer them to urgent care, and oftentimes, most recently, we've been getting phone calls of denials. Those patients cannot get their medication from those places. Those doctors are not comfortable prescribing those things, and it puts us between a rock and a hard spot. We have an individual who perhaps has to wait because they're on a waiting list, or perhaps they missed their appointment for whatever reason, and they can't get in for another three to four weeks, and so we refer them to emergency care, and then they cannot receive that. It puts them in a terrible situation. I know that we're working as community leaders, all of us, to close these gaps. I know that there's an emergency room care facility that should be opening soon for mental health alone, and I believe that will happen in January. I'm very excited for that. Another issue that we have found is transportation. Previously, it was logisticare. Now it's under a new contract, a new name. I can't remember the name off of my head. Yes. Thank you. We have found, you know, in some occasions, it's been a blessing to some patients, and other patients have just had a more difficult time making those arrangements. We're not sure why. We're not sure what the problem is, if it's just a random problem or if it's a communication error. We're just not sure. Same thing with the Medicaid services and the new-- I don't want to call it Obamacare, but it's the Obamacare services. People are changing insurances. People are losing insurances. People are not staying on top of being revalidated within their insurance, and so we'll have an established patient who comes regularly, and then all of a sudden, they lose their insurance. So the communication with the patient from the insurance company also has been somewhat of an issue. Group therapies also. We provide group therapies at our clinic, and I think that it's been an issue for transportation in this town because buses stop at a certain time, and a lot of times, group therapy happens in the evening, and then they can't get home afterwards. We originally were providing transportation until a transient individual burnt our van down. Unfortunately, we couldn't afford to replace that van, so now we're at a spot where certain services through insurance companies have decreased in their payment towards the individual, and so our overhead has increased. So we cannot provide those same services that we could have provided previous to the insurance changes that the government has put in place. To the Life Change Center, I'm very proud to be on the board of directors for the Life Change Center. It is a nonprofit. It is brand-new in the Carson City area. It is a methadone clinic that works with comprehensive medication-assisted treatment for those who are addicted to opioids. They are currently working with individuals who are part of the drug rehabilitation program through the courts, trying to stabilize individuals who are in need of medication-management-assisted therapy. They work in conjunction with Serenity, as well as other mental health facilities, to ensure that those individuals, when they get past the point where they're teetering down and decreasing their dosage, they're also receiving other mental health services. Oftentimes, there's lots of comorbidity involved in that. There's lots of other medical and mental health diagnoses that go along with that, so we're really working with community partners. And again, to echo previous individuals, I've really enjoyed being a part of the community programs that happen. There's a meeting tomorrow at the sheriff's office where we all gather and discuss pros and cons and needs and how we can fulfill them, community resourcing. And one definite positive is the JAST program and the MOST team. I think working in collaboration with those teams, for those of you that don't know, the MOST team is a mental health-- great. And also, the JAST team is for the juveniles who need the additional mental health treatment through the Justice Department. So these are all fantastic. We're-- I'm also on the team for the Juvenile Justice Court in the Drug Court every Tuesday, and they have really the judge in that case. Kim O'Keesy has been really fantastic at understanding and bringing forth the importance of the mental health needs in the individuals who are going through that process and acknowledging the importance of that puzzle piece.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Genevieve, I'm sorry, got your name mixed up.
Genevieve, a question I have on the private side of things. When you're dealing with a patient that's dealing with depression, how much do-- does personal privacy and embracing the entire family in a circumstance like that, making them aware of the depression and how serious it is? Is that a roadblock? Is it hard to get patients to include their families in their treatment? Can you just speak to that?
Absolutely. So depending on the licensure that the individual clinician carries, also depending on the therapeutic modality that they're most comfortable with and the patient is most comfortable with, it really is an individualized decision. When that individual comes for therapy, if they go to someone who's a clinical professional counselor, they are only allowed to do individual therapy. And currently, our licensing board is working on getting those individuals additional training so they can do families and they can make that switch over. Marriage and family therapists, however, are trained in a more systemic approach, which involves systems and it involves families. So we most often encourage family involvement, and we, especially if we're dealing with a youth, with a child, I would say probably 99% of the time, if we're dealing with an adolescent or a child, we are absolutely involving the entire family. If it's an adult, again, it's really up to that adult to discuss their issues, feel when they are in a safe place, then to introduce the family to the issues. But systemically, I mean, that's the way that we are trained. I myself am also a marriage and family therapist, so I definitely incorporate the entire family if and when it is possible.
Put aside reimbursement rates, are there significant areas of coverage gaps in Medicare or Medicaid on the services that you think would-- should be covered in our community?
I don't want to get shot down, but yes. I have to be careful with the way I say things.
Want to find out. I mean, I want to-- I want to know if, you know, if there's something in Medicare or Medicaid that, you know, if there's a diagnosis, if there's a disorder that's not covered, that's what I'm kind of looking for.
Not a specific disorder. We have found that there are-- there are many, many more people now who are qualified for insurance, and so what Medicaid has done is stepped back in authorizing services when a clinician feels it is necessary. So there are individual therapeutic services which we can provide without prior authorization, and those individuals do get those services. But the additional services, when clinicians feel it is medically, clinically necessary, we will request these additional services, and oftentimes, those services are denied based on a random denial, a very general, generic--
Yeah, as best you can say. I guess I want to chime in a little bit, is that my experience has been that the public insurances actually have better coverage for mental health issues than many of the private insurances, which is nice. Unfortunately, the reimbursement rates for the clinicians or the agencies are so much lower that, as was implied, the overhead is high. So there's kind of a catch-22 in that situation.
Yes. I think another gap is the patient's awareness of what we are and are not allowed to do, what we can and cannot provide. At Serenity, we attempt to acknowledge those issues in the very beginning, in the initial intake. However, people come to us oftentimes from other places, and they're expecting certain things that we're confused as to how they could even expect that. So the rules, the regulations, the policies, and the procedures of insurance companies and mental health in general, ethics, what we are and are not allowed to do, I think it would be beneficial to notify the general public of what to expect and what is allowed and what isn't allowed, and what is appropriate ethically and what is not appropriate ethically, so that when they come in our door, they're not shocked to hear what we have to say.
Thank you, Genevieve. Appreciate any other questions? Thank you. Have I missed anyone here? Oh, who have I missed? You, sir, are public comment. You get to talk. Come forward.
I'm going to go quick and hand these out, too. I'll meet Genevieve halfway around.
You can-- I'll be--
My name is Lori Roberts. I'm co-founder of Nevada Equine Assisted Therapy. We are an, in addition to, not instead of, traditional talk therapy. We are a fee-for-service Medicaid provider for psycho-social rehabilitation, and we also provide social, emotional, and behavioral growth and learning to non-Medicaid clients. Our program is unique in that we have horses as partners in the work that we do. We are working with children as young as four years of age, seniors, teens, adults. We also partner with a nationally-recognized eating disorder program. The Center for Hope is located in Reno, and twice a week, they send a small group to us to work on the issues that their clientele are dealing with. I'm working with ADHD, bipolar, post-traumatic stress disorder, oppositional defiant disorder, schizophrenia, you name it, we're working with it. We are a one-on-one program, except when we are doing that small-group work, which means that we consider each client's specific goals and objectives as set forth by their licensed therapist. The therapist diagnoses, the therapist creates a treatment plan. We help to implement that treatment plan. Everybody on my staff is a qualified mental health associate, meaning that we've all obtained a certain level of education and work experience in the mental health field. A lot of people are resistant to more traditional sit-down-and-talk therapy. They maybe aren't comfortable with that. It's a personal choice, but all of our clientele are required, especially the fee-for-service Medicaid clients, to work with a therapist, because I can't diagnose. I can't set the treatment plan. But once I have that information from a therapist, I can help them achieve their goals. Child with oppositional defiant disorder, my job is to help them understand that adults often have very important information, A, to keep them safe, and B, to help them be successful. They want to get to interact with that horse, so they're going to have to listen to me, and they're going to have to interact with me in a respectful and appropriate manner. Maybe they're ADHD, and they come with energy that's bouncing them off the roof. They have to bring that energy down in order to work with their horse. Horses don't like it when we're bouncing off the roof. We help them learn self-soothing and coping skills. We help them learn to stay on task. The sooner they get their horse groomed and tacked up, the more time they're going to have to ride. We recently relocated to just 10 minutes north of Carson. We are here for Carson. We are here to help serve the needs of the people of Carson. We partner with lots of different agencies who refer to us for the psycho-social rehabilitation piece. That's all we do. That's it. You're welcome. Nope. Okay.
Just that I know you do great work.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that.
You should really--
Hello, my name's Christina Pope, and I'm representing the Westside Center.
Thank you. Sorry, Christina.
Yeah, I'm a marriage and family therapist, and I also work with Cornerstone as well. But at the Westside Center, I think it's very familiar in the community. I only moved here a couple of years ago, and it seems to be well-known. We provide private practice for-- we're in a private practice setting-- We're in a private practice setting, and we accept individual insurances as well as some Medicaid with one of our clinical psychologists. We have clinical psychologists and marriage and family therapists. We really provide a therapeutic space to come for each individual, addressing trauma and childhood issues and kind of in a certain, kind of a higher functioning situation than we've been talking about with our community services. But as a therapist embedded in different systems, care systems in our community through private practice and at Cornerstone Counseling, the one thing I've, the gap that everyone's been echoing is anxiety in adolescents, and I have a little anxiety right now. But I'm used to being in a nice, small, cozy room with a scarf or something. But that has just echoed throughout everywhere I've gone since I've moved to the community, and it's a cultural issue as well.
So you're saying that that's under-recognized or underserved or both?
Well, it's really difficult to create and maintain a therapeutic space for teens to come, and especially for children. And I think they're all being addressed, it's just difficult to hold that circle for the population.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Christina. Any questions for Christina? I think, thank you. I appreciate all of your input. Are there other agencies that I should have called on? Mr. Bayer, would you come and throw your two cents into the hat or the ring, or two mixed metaphors?
Chris Bayer, Director of CASA of Carson City, the nonprofit that has provided the first judicial district courts with child advocacy since 1987. Over the last 20-plus years, I've seen and been part of the monitoring, reporting and service delivery to hundreds, perhaps thousands, of Carson City children involved in child welfare as well as high-conflict divorce court cases. These frequently involve the need for mental health services to children and their families. For the most part, I'm referring to children younger than those involved with juvenile justice or older children who have no juvenile justice involvement at the time they enter the court system with their families. These children are in court process because of their parents. In Carson City, mental health services associated with these court processes for children and families are fragmented and too often fall short of the specific needs of children and families. There has not been forethought about how mental health should work for children and families in the child welfare and high-conflict divorce legal processes. The court process has a great impact on people. Courts need to do this with good information and clear custody and visitation recommendations. The analogy I make is to our substance abuse treatment. When the city provided leadership on the meth issue, we saw the development at Community Counseling Center of a treatment provider that integrates well with the court system. That effort created recognition and a standard. It solidified the courts in the city as dedicated to a humane ethical approach to substance abuse, recognizing that treatment and family mental health is involved with, recognizing that treatment saved on costs. I could outline the specific elements of an integrated approach as I see them. There's not enough time now. Those elements would give you more insight into the needs. More important would be a focused discussion with people you do not hear from very often. Perhaps the most significant barrier to such an effort is the degree to which these cases are confidential, removed, private and intense. It would require leadership to pull the right people to the table. There are models for integrating mental health with children and families with these kinds of court processes. Carson City has resources with pieces of the picture. These include mental health services provided by private providers, Carson Tahoe Hospital, the Division of Child and Family Services, and the Ronwood Family Resource Center. There's funding available through the Children's Advocacy Center approach out of the Office of Juvenile Justice, sufficient to begin an integrated mental health approach with these kinds of court cases. A CAC could be nested in one of the several local agencies or providers and could be either team-based or facility-based. There are sufficient pieces available locally that a CAC could be accomplished. It would require collaboration, planning and leadership. I will re-mail Dr. Pintar these comments. I didn't get my timer turned on. I hope I did it.
No, no, no. You followed my instructions nicely. Thank you. And I think to summarize, Chris, as you know, is Director of Court Appointed Special Advocates, which is what CASA stands for, and has a very intimate knowledge of these children. And while they may not be the identified clients for mental health, they are severely affected, and we have not coordinated our services in our community for those children.
Our dollars are best spent, most effectively spent, on the younger, the younger we go. The younger we impact people, the more bang we get for our buck. So the first point at which children come into public awareness and services for mental health may well be a child welfare case. 60% of our kids, and we have 60 right now, 60% of those or more are under the age of five or six. There's no other place where they are coming into formal oversight. The impact of high-conflict divorce, the impact of child welfare cases, when we look at the homeless population, the two large groups we see are kids who've been in foster care and veterans. Why? Trauma. And so, trauma-informed approaches and integrated family approaches that work well with the court system. And it's that latter piece that I really want to emphasize. And there are models. And I could, if the city wanted to provide leadership on this, when I mentioned the CAC model, the Children's Advocacy Center model, that was suggested to me by top people at Division of Child and Family Services. I think they'd be willing to sit down and talk about that.
All right. Further questions? I'll open it up to other public comment. I have found this a useful discussion. We have lots of resources here, but we also, I think, are feeling that there are a number of gaps that have been identified. Ms. Nikki, would you like to throw a few summary comments in for us?
Sure. Thank you, Nikki Aker, Carson City Health and Human Services. So like Susan said, we heard from a number of our mental health providers here in Carson City. A lot of these people are our partners at Carson City Health and Human Services. Just to summarize, some of the gaps that were identified, we've got a gap with the geriatric population, giving, getting services to them, and assisted outpatient treatment program, which is going to be moving into Washoe County, so we'll definitely keep our eyes on that and see how that is progressing. We've got a gap with data collection, which is not surprising to me at all. We've got a gap with data collection on a lot of, within a lot of different services. We heard a lot about the gaps with our young people, the opioid addiction within the young and the services that can be provided to these individuals, making a comfortable space for them to go and get the services that they so need. We heard a lot about gaps with the insurance and the reduction in the authorization of services and reimbursements. With the Affordable Care Act insurance, it's not only obtaining it, it's also retaining it. And then also the excessive insurance deductibles. We heard that there's a gap to getting the information out to individuals of the awareness of the services that they can access and how those services are guided by ethics and rules and regulations of that industry. We also heard that there was a, there's a demand which exceeds the supply. And, you know, it takes a long time to get into those providers. And then we are forced to have those individuals that need emergency services go to the ER, and that's not the most effective service for them. And we also heard that there's a gap with transportation. And we, that's not, again, not a surprise. And I just want to make a comment that I think as a community, we've made great strides in this area. Yes, we have room for improvement, but as you can see, there's a lot of us working on this. And I also want to make the comment that at Carson City Health and Human Services, we do not provide mental health services, although, you know, we have a lot of these individuals that come in for other services, and we're partnering with these other agencies to get services for them. We have a new partnership with Cornerstone that is working with some of our shelter-plus-care clients. And so we refer to them, and they're willing to help with those individuals. What we do provide are some of those social and economic factors, the housing, you know, we, yes, we've got limitations with that, too, but we're working to provide these individuals housing. And our employment readiness and job hiring events, we're working to try and get these individuals employment. So we've got, right now, working within our housing program, we've got a community health worker, and she's here with us, Faith Barber, and she works with those clients. And it's not always a mental health issue, but she's there to help refer them and help guide them through the process. So, and I also just wanted to quickly make, mention that as far as the MOST team, the equipment that they're using for their crisis intervention training, we were able to purchase through one of our grants. And those are the goggles and the audio that shows people exactly what mental health looks like and feels like and, you know, what they're hearing. And to date, there have been 14 trainings in which 220 individuals have been trained with that equipment. So those are just some of the things that we at the Health Department are doing as far as mental health, but we're not providing the services directly.
Thank you, Nikki. I think the purpose of these types of meetings is not to say we, you know, as the city are going to provide the services much as be the convener, isn't that, that's the word I'm looking for. So, anyway, other further questions along those lines?
No, I'd just like to say, I thought this was one of the more valuable sessions we've had. I mean, you know, it's, I found myself thinking, you know, there's a whole lot of issues out there, but I did think that at the end, you know, it gives you a flavor of what's going on in the community and a flavor of who's attacking, who's addressing these issues. I struggle a little bit, well, you know, let me just back up and say, you know what, I agree with what Nikki said, that, you know, it seems as though our community, both on the public side and the private side, has done a pretty good job of trying to be innovative in the programs like the juvenile program, MOST and the FAST Team, with trying to marshal what resources we have to address issues. You know, and Nikki, I guess, you know, maybe you answered Susan already, that the, you know, the role that this board has in mental health, I guess, is really just a convener. I mean, it's, I think, is that correct or incorrect? I mean, are there things that you saw in terms of gaps that we could address through this board?
I guess I'll answer that a little bit, and I think the answer is indirectly yes, is that part of it is through the influence of the Board of Health, which, what kinds of agencies do we want to encourage to be here? What kind, and, you know, going back to the determinants of health, how do we influence health behaviors, for example, as the Board of Health? What sort of regulations do we support or not support? I think an important thing is that clinical care, which is represented here, is a small piece of it. When we look at it, it's 10%, but that we, as a Board of Health and as, or as community members, have influence on all of these other determinants. So it's to bring the matter to the fore. I don't have the magic wand.
And if I, and if I could just expand on that, too, it's even, yes, it's here with you at the Board of Health, but it's even beyond that, and in the Board of Supervisors as we're looking at, you know, more employment opportunities, you know, you heard housing is a big issue, and those are conversations that we're starting to have and look for different solutions. So keeping that in mind also.
Well, and I'd just like to comment, too, that housing documented all over the nation is the number one. If you can get someone in a home, then you can start directing them to the other services that they need. So I can't emphasize enough that perhaps, you know, the focus needs to be directed towards that so that we can get people into the proper care.
Well, and I think we have an opportunity. Last year, we created a Grants Administrator position, and one of the lead roles that we may be able to take is to actually look into the Child, Children Advocacy Center, and maybe we're a facilitator to obtaining that grant and really begin the leadership role on what can we do to impact mental health systemically through Carson City and bring all the partners together. So I don't know if we can refer that one to our Grants Administrator to take a look at and maybe bring us back a report on if it's something the city can do or whether we should reach out and get someone in the community to do, but we should be addressing that.
Good idea. We'll take a look at that.
I have two questions or comments or observations. First is regarding Karen's comment about housing. I'd be interested to find out what impact you think there would be on the portion of people with mental health problems that are homeless who would not want to participate, because my understanding is that that's a significant issue, that they want to be out on the street and they don't want to partake if you provide them housing. So what impact would that have on a program if we instituted a program? So that's one thing I'd be interested in learning about. The second is, what is your opinion on the impact on supply and demand, because we hear that there's more demand than supply, from the, the mental impact on the mental health workers? So my son is a PSR in Reno, and my understanding from him, a psychosocial rehabilitator. But from what he's telling me, like, your career burnout is like seven to 10 years. So what impact?
With all the nods, you're like, yeah, we're done.
So what impact does that have on our ability to provide the supply?
It has a huge impact. And...
May I interrupt you and say that, interestingly enough, the next topic that's been chose is workforce for the Board of Health. And that definitely is one of the topics within there.
Well, going back to my son, you know, he has his bachelor's and was registered to start the master's program. He's been in this field for seven years. He's burned out. He doesn't want to, he doesn't want to go get his master's now. I mean, he's looking for a career change, just because mentally, the impact on all of you is significant.
And that is correct. It does have a high burnout, and that's something that, you know, even at the national level, it needs to be looked at as, you know, and nursing is in the same boat. And I don't have the answer, you know, but that is something that we need to definitely look at as a nation on that topic.
But I think it does segue nicely into workforce, because I think the implication being is that if we had a, we had a larger group of people to provide the services, then hopefully the, the caseload would be reduced to manageable and the stress would be hopefully reduced. I'm not sure it would, but we'll hope.
And some things that they've been looking at, I know, in the nursing side of it, is more programs, you know, so that they're getting more people through. I know some of these programs within the mental health industry, you know, they're limited to the number of individuals that they take. So I can research more what's happening up at UNR and what we're seeing with that. And then as far, Brad, you bring up a really good point as far as the housing. Yes, you know, there are individuals that they cannot function in a structured housing environment. But I think that there are also other individuals that they're just, they can function within that restriction, and those are the ones that, you know, we need to help if we can.
Susan, one comment, and I brought this up at the health meeting that we had. To what extent would it be helpful? To what extent would it be helpful to bring alternative medicine into this conversation? To reduce workload?
You could put it to them.
I'm just suggesting.
Representatives here do, do include alternative, what would be considered complementary alternative health options. And so, again, from the standpoint of mental health, they have various, I mean, various services that are offered and they were invited, I guess is what I can say.
Okay, thank you. So. And Karen, I would think that Linda's program that she just described on the neat with the horses is no drugs whatsoever yet, very, very.
And my point is exactly that, non-drug related, but other alternatives. If they were invited, that's all I need to hear. If they didn't come, that's a different issue, but.
For example, Sierra Counseling and Neurotherapy offers a variety of, of alternative treatments, as does the Westside Center. So, I think we're, I, I think that we asked the right people here. If I didn't, it's all on me.
Just fine, it's okay.
All right. I'll ask again for public comment and otherwise, we'll go on to approval of our 2017 Board of Health meetings, which are likely scheduled for January 5, March 16, May 18, September 21, and November 16. I don't know. Who finds that far ahead?
Can I just make a comment? Why do we need to do this when they're always scheduled during an existing Board of Supervisors meeting? We're here.
I don't know. Maybe so I'll show up? I don't know.
I assume we can let you know.
I, I don't know. Either of you two over there have an idea why we did that?
The planning process.
I would say it just clarifies when the Board of Health meetings would take place within the Board of Supervisors, on what days and months.
Okay, so that's a possible action.
I move to adopt.
Thank you.
And I second it.
Motion in second to approve the schedule of the 2017 Board of Health meetings. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll try and show up for those meetings. Goodbye. Adjourn. So long. A more public comment? Never mind.